Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the Tuesday, August 27th, 2024 meeting of the Escanito Planning Commission to order. If you please rise and sit.
[inaudible]
Chair Wyler.
Here.
Vice Chair Barber. Commissioner McCarroll.
Here.
Commissioner Spear. Commissioner Juster.
Here.
Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
And Commissioner Correll.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes or any discussion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Correll.
I'll second.
Commissioner McCarroll, second. If we could have the vote, please.
Voting has been opened. Do you refresh your screens now?
Mine is in a different something here. Oh, actually, it's okay. I gotta abstain anyway.
And Commissioner Juster. There we go. And the vote is four zero to approve with one standing.
Moving on to communications. Any written communications on anything not on tonight's agenda?
None of this stuff.
Any oral communications?
None of this.
Moving on to public hearings. At this point, we'll go ahead and ask for any disclosures on public hearing item number two, if anyone's got any disclosure. That's on the files. Nope, saying none. At that point, if you can go ahead and get the staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. Fellow Commissioners. My name is Vikram Shima. I'm a planning consultant with RIC, formerly as RIC Engineering. We're a private firm that augments planning services for the city of Escanito. And I've been working as the project manager on this project since late 2023. Tonight's planning commission item proposes the approval of a forty-foot-tall mono-ecolypus, a monopole, supporting three new wireless antenna, as well as a three hundred and forty-three square foot CMU block wall enclosure for wall and ground-mounted equipment. This equipment includes a twenty kilowatt generator, a backup generator for intermittent use. The project site has a general plan designation of Valley View, specific planning area four, and a corresponding zoning designation of specific plan. A portion of the total specific planning area is regulated by the Rancho Vista Monte specific plan. The subject site, however, is not within this specific plan area. The subject site is not subject to the general plan, to specific plan standards, and in accordance with section F of the general plan, specific plan amendment Valley View, specific plan number four, it was treated for purposes of development with a general plan or as a general plan designation of rural two and a zoning designation of residential agriculture. Those were the zoning standards that were applied when determining setbacks or a ratio height of overall development standards. The project's open request. The site, the subject site is ten point, approximately round off to ten, ten acre project site. It's developed with a single-family home currently. The project site is surrounded by other residences on large lots to the northeast. There's a planned development of eighty units, and Safari Park is located to the east and the southeast of the subject site. The applicant's request is to allow construction of a new freestanding forty-foot-tall wireless communications facility supporting three new antenna. The proposed mono-ecolypus is designed with stealth technology and clad in synthetic materials simulating a bluegrass stream. Proposed mono-ecolypus will be supported by new ground and wall-mounted equipment, including a twenty kilowatt diesel generator for backup power. The request also includes the construction of a ground-level enclosure surrounded by eight-foot-tall concrete base-ring unit CMU block wall to house supportive equipment for the wireless cellular facility, as well as associated landscaping. The request before the commission this evening is to grant approval of an additional use permit as described in the public notice as filed for support, support the associated CUP finals, as well as compliance with section three, three, dash, seven, zero, three of the Escanito zoning code, personal wireless services and facilities guidelines, five general principles. This is an aerial photograph with a red dot indicating the monopole and its location. The enclosure is not depicted in this aerial photograph, so I'll go to it just a little further. So the project site is generally sparse and has a variant topography. You can see here on the top-left corner, the west-facing perspective from the project site, which is looking at an incline towards subject, towards the residents on the subject site already. The south-facing elevation is again fairly sparse, so very mature tree there, somewhat mature tree canopy, and the east-facing perspective is another single-family residence on an adjacent parcel. This is the project site denoted in heavy dashes and its surrounding uses. The existing family home is located here on the site plan, and the adjacent property and single-family home is located here on the eastern portion of the site with the project site delineated in the large dash lines. So part of the high-quality design of the site is the proposed landscape plan. This is part of the design principles that regulate wireless facilities according to the Escanito zoning code. And the applicant has proposed a landscape plan which includes six twenty-four-inch box desert willows and a number twelve and twenty-four of oil of Bogomia and Texas sagebrush. The desert willows are known to grow up to twenty feet with canopies equally as wide. So really, the landscape plan is adequate and perhaps even more than adequate, substantially adequate to visually integrate, make sure the site is visually integrated into the This is an enlarged view of the area immediately surrounding the project site in plan view. We can see the monopole of this here with its surrounding foliage or canopy noted by a light dash line. We can see the three hundred and forty-three square foot concrete base-ring unit block enclosure located just to the south of that housing all ground-mounted equipment and permanent vegetation screening, which includes, as I said before, the desert willows as well as a varied variety of shrubs. And we're going to be zooming in a little further on the details a bit closer on the next slide. So we reoriented ourselves a little bit, so we're kind of within east-west orientation, but this is the existing monopole, again, the circumference of the existing foliage or the proposed foliage, a flat monopole and antenna. There are two compartments to the CMU block wall enclosure. Smaller of the two here is housing the twenty kilowatt generator. The enclosure itself is made of a concrete base-ring units, and the galvanized steel gates that provide access to the equipments will be painted to match natural tones that surround the enclosure, reducing light and glare and reducing against visual impact. So the Escanito zoning code actually has a very specific section that applies to wireless cellular facilities, and it has five general guidelines, which new development and existing development is encouraged to adhere to. The analysis and the staff will elaborate on each of these. I just thought I would go through them briefly with you to ensure that, or to demonstrate that the applicant has complied with these general guidelines. The monopole antenna and foliage comply with the height standards in the HRA zone. This is actually showing the monopole at a thirty-five-foot height. However, there is a zoning code exemption for opportunities and for foliage that's meant to serene the other one is visible antenna, which brings the overall request and the height to a total of four feet. The location of the antenna are developed with the needs of the network in accordance with the property owner. The mono-ecolypus enclosure will employ permanent landscaping, stealth technology, high-quality installed material. And this is a new facility, so not subject to distinct facility guidelines. And the facility has conducted noise and radio frequency emission studies and have both found those two to be non-impactful. These are manufacturer specifications describing synthetic materials used in the stealth technology, including foliage that has in-depth details, including insect damage, veins and extra As I mentioned before, a noise study was conducted, and this is a visual representation of the audible levels surrounding the site when the generator is active. And you can see the red and yellow, like green areas. There's two receptors noted on the graphic, gray, green, on either side of the enclosure here that's one and two, those are the two residences. They are outside of the impacted area for residential uses. A noise study that was conducted determined on the sensitive receptors, that the sensitive receptors would not be impacted by noise related to the intermittent use of the generator. Both sensitive receptors are unaffected, and those noise levels do not exceed those dictated during quiet hours in residential zones. Radio frequency electromagnetic emissions study was also performed. Federal government maintains standards on maximum potential exposure levels related to electromagnetic emissions associated with cellular towers. Qualified EME report stated no individual or cumulative effect at the ground level. However, cautionary signage should be installed for workers who are elevated and may be exposed to cumulative effects. This safety science program is partly efficient to approve. Staff seeking to examine the project per CUP guidelines fifteen, three, oh, three, construction conversion of small structures. We have a no-sentence exemption, which is prepared and ready to be filed with the [inaudible]. The staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution number two, zero, two, four, dash, one, four, approving P L twenty-three, zero, three, thirty-five, and the environmental determinate should make for the project. So the group of communication available for any questions?
All right, thank you. Before we get into questions and discussions, I just want to remind the planning commission, if we could, get my attention if you have a question, so I can kind of call you by name, and then also make sure our discussion and your questions are really relative to the land use issues that are kind of here before us this evening. So with that, I'll leave [inaudible]. Commissioner Juster.
Out of curiosity, is this, is the applicant, is this the land use for the applicant for this home?
This would be property that this is privately owned, and it would be under the city management contract property under that specific space allocation.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll entertain any discussion, entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Juster.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner McCarroll.
And voting has been opened. The vote is five zero to approve.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to current business, we have item number three, PL twenty-four, zero, one, zero, one. This is the Mills Act request, and we have a presentation by staff. Oh, if I could, before you vote, we can need disclosures.
Just that I know the applicant, they are my neighbors.
All right. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Putting on my second hat for the evening. Okay, my name is Alex Regal, Assistant Fire Department, Planning Division. Now, I'm presenting to you item PL two, four, zero, one, zero, one, a request for your recommendation to the city manager to authorize the execution of a Mills Act contract. The homeowner is a single-family resident in the [inaudible]. As a property background, the project site is located in the north side of Sixth Avenue and west of Great Street, addressed as five hundred and forty-sixth East Sixth Avenue, comprising of two lots totaling roughly ten thousand five hundred square feet within the boundaries of all this neighborhood, owned by the property owners, property George and Reese [spelled incorrectly]. The single-family home on the site was originally constructed, estimated in nineteen oh three, and consists of a twenty-six hundred square foot single, two-story residence, current construction under the Dutch colonial revival architectural style, which improved during the late nineteen seventies. The property additionally features a near six hundred square foot basement, two hundred square foot patio area, and a seven hundred square foot detached garage constructed to complement the architectural style of the estate home. As another property background, the property's first two thousand and twenty-four, the zoning administrator approved your request to list the home on the city's local register of historic places, determining the home net three and seven criteria of the city of Escanito's zoning code, section thirty-three, seven, ninety-four. Those criteria include the age of the property, the [inaudible] related to [inaudible] estimate in two thousand and oh three, the architectural style, and the previous owner's contributions to the city of Escanito's development in early eighteen [inaudible]. The request before you today is in regards to the Mills Act contract, otherwise known as the historic property preservation agreement or historic property contracts. Mills Act contract is an agreement between the property owner and local government to provide tax relief for owners of qualified historic properties in exchange for regular maintenance and improvements to the designated historical resource through financial incentives in order to maintain, rehabilitate, and preserve our historic resources. The Mills Act contract is billed by the property owner's for the city's local register of historic places, and includes a schedule of improvements that are identified as part of the agreement, which will be described further and later in my presentation. The planning commission firm you this evening is to act as the legislative body required by government code, section I, zero, two, eight, zero, recommending to the city manager for the execution of the agreement with the property owner. And so the Mills Act contract's initial term is ten years and runs with the property in favor of the property owner or the city, decided to approve it, just in the agreement. The contract includes provisions for various items, city inspections, to ensure compliance with provisions set forth, and schedule improvements proposed on the property. To date, the city has entered into over one hundred Mills Act contracts throughout the state, and majority of them being [inaudible]. As part of the review of the Mills Act contract, city staff has worked diligently with the property owners in order to identify the scheduled list of improvements to justify the contract, so to speak. As I spoke briefly in my previous slide, purposes of the contract and tax incentives, in order to provide the property owner some financial assistance for property maintenance, rehabilitation, restoration, and enhancement of the property which would be conducive to the goal of secondary interior standards for the treatment of historical problems. But benefit of the planning commission, the city staff, city has identified the schedule of improvements presented to you through review of the following categories. Structural integrity, which is typically reserved for the preservation, conservation of the maintenance of the home, directly identified in California Register of Historic Resources for evaluating historic structures. Architectural dominance, which is in line with criteria two and criteria seven of the city of Escanito's local register requirements. As this property's designation is on the local register, including the secondary, it is important to the city staff to identify architectural enhancements of the property maintenance, which is in line with general maintenance of the actual home itself in order to ensure that future property damage does not occur as a result of four [inaudible]. And it's in line with section thirty-three, eight, hundred of the Escanito zoning code regarding owners' historic resources to be [inaudible]. And beautification involves improvements specifically not related to the historic resource itself. However, they will serve to enhance the property and feel its community in its entirety. Such improvements are typically related to landscaping, exterior design elements, or other meters that are particularly seen to enhance the property's [inaudible]. And interior improvements are just that, interior improvements, which are not typically related to the building's historical nature, but can be costly improvements themselves. These improvements can also be involved with safety and security. The property owner has had provided some additional information, both to have an purpose to include the cost estimates based on the information provided by building contractors that's shown on this slide and that the new provided staff [inaudible]. And note that these estimates are above and beyond typical cost savings where they're applied to the Mills Act contract and the tax incentives. However, again, the Mills Act is a financial benefit to the system and is not necessarily required of one for one cost implications. Next few slides are going to present you some contract with schedule improvements which are more of an architectural nature. It would not be immediately identifiable by the planning commission. As we're all familiar with [inaudible] property improvements to align based that nature. However, again, the Mills Act contract does allow the property owner to propose architectural enhancements as well, and beautification is part of the agreement. As noted in these images, some of the numbers that are shown on this slide are part of the [inaudible] of our discussion for these improvements, so they're not directly related to the ones that were [inaudible] in this year's presentation. We work with staff, six is that work with the applicant to consolidate, determine the best day [inaudible] of the project. And so, sorry. Showing on this slide are references specifically to item three on the schedule of improvements, which show the future damage to the existing sliding doors and windows and some of the original or current final construction, which is proposed to be approved to something of a property nature of the actual construction. These improvements are intended to do both repairs and their replacement for a period of appropriate items for the actual architectural [inaudible]. Following slide here provides the context to item four, which involves some of the exterior damage inside and other repair requirements, which will be part of the entire cost scope of the project. All exterior modifications, including the basic property [inaudible] shown here, additional beautification and cancer products, will be subject to the [inaudible] application process to the planning division. All future files submitted to the city will be required to comply with part of the forty or historical resources code, part of the sixty-five [inaudible] neighborhood, and the adopted design guidelines for homes with historic resources. These will also have to comply with the city's carried interior standards for treatment of historical problems. These projects, and the projects now listed on this schedule of improvements, will also need to conform with the schedule list of improvements reported with the city in this agreement in order to ensure that future actions do not violate the [inaudible] list. The owner, as part of the contract, has agreed also to periodic examinations and inspections of the property as necessary to ensure compliance with this agreement. This project and the contract agreements have been reviewed by staff through a formal review and found in the categories that proceed to section one, five, three, three, one, which is historical restoration, historical resource restoration, and [inaudible]. And based on the analysis contained within the [inaudible] report, staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution two thousand and twenty-four, dash, fifteen, recommending that the city manager be executing of the Mills Act contract [inaudible]. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the property owners are available for any [inaudible].
All right, thank you. Any questions upstairs? And do we have, oh, Commissioner Correll?
Typically, in the Mills Act, only the portion of the property that's fifty years old or older would apply. So is in this application specifically the addition that that square footage is not a part of the Mills Act application?
So the actual contract agreement for your statement to be fifty years old, statement does involve the actual tax assessment as far as how the [inaudible]. The contract agreement is going to be [inaudible] property entirety and not necessarily related to the tax benefits. However, it's more of the entire property, the structure [inaudible]. So it's not directly [inaudible]. Yeah, the assessment is completely [inaudible]. Thank you.
Any other questions upstairs? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item? It doesn't look like we got anybody to sign up. Would the applicant like to say a couple words?
Oh, just that, you know, we're right across [inaudible].
If you could, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hi.
And if you could just state your name for the record, and then I think we need to have a speaker slip filled out for the right thing, if we can do that.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Denise Lincoln. My husband Rodney George. Like I said, the house is right at the top of Sixth Avenue, right across from what we come to find out, is [inaudible] apart, right next door to the wealthy house, which is very well-known in the area. We just bought it back in November and love the neighborhood. We became very active with a lot of the groups and things like that, and very interested in making sure this house does not fall into ruins. And some days I wonder how close it's getting, you know? But anyway, I'm here for any questions or any concerns. There was a lot of updates done over a period of time, some beautifully, some not so much, but the house just needs everything refreshed and renovated, plus a lot of structural things. So I appreciate your attention.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Any comments? I've driven by the house. It's really nice, and I'm glad you're gonna go through the effort to make sure that you retain the structure, you know?
Yeah.
And all of the glory of what it used to be and what it can be. So thank you. Commissioner Correll?
All I was gonna say is this is exactly what it's for, so we're excited that you're doing this, and you did a great job on the application.
Oh, thank you so much. And I was...
You was wrong.
[laughing] And you did it wrong.
Commissioner McCarroll?
This is really one of the most spectacular houses in our neighborhood. If you are not familiar with it, it is truly one of the gems, and so we're hoping that Denise will put it on Mother's Day home tour for our enjoyment at some point. Not gonna lie.
It will be there, maybe not this year, but let's see if that foundation does. For [inaudible] people coming, probably should be stable.
All right, any other questions? We'll close the [inaudible] if we can, any discussion? Motion to approve?
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCarroll to approve resolution two, zero, two, four, dash, fifteen. We have a second by Commissioner Correll. We can have the vote, please.
And voting has been opened. And the vote for the recognition has been approved, five zero.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
All right, good luck.
If you sit out, it's out there digging, why don't you an extra set of hands? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item. That's item number four, Escanito neighborhood recommendation. I believe this was a discussion that Commissioner Stevie wanted to have with this group, so we'll go ahead, unless there's any other introduction, we can start the discussion.
All right, Paul. It's exciting that we get to have this on a night that we actually get to approve a house for the Mills Act and to hear you both kind of weigh in on, you know, what that process looks like. What I wanted to talk about tonight was, I wanted to talk about how a historic neighborhood like what we have can be maybe utilized to drive more visitor traffic, even local resident traffic from people who are not, like, you know, I lived here most of my life. I had no idea that the old historic Escanito was even a thing, right? I really didn't. I driven through it, you know, I'd seen the homes, but for me, it wasn't something that, like, really stood out as a destination. When I say a thing, I mean a destination, a place I would take my kids, show them what the city was, tell them a bit about its history, like, that just didn't even occur to me. And since we've had the opportunity to discuss it, since the presentation by Alex a few weeks ago, I went and did some digging into... ago, I went and did some digging into other historic neighborhoods and looked into the relationship between those neighborhoods and the local downtown districts that accompany in them, and how that can create a kind of catalytic mechanism for commerce in the city, for improving the overall reputation of a city, driving private development in the city, all of that sort of thing. And so, I wanted to open the floor to especially our two resident expert commissioners to maybe share a little bit about what we've done here in the city and maybe what we're missing out on. For example, I remember Commissioner Correll talking about how the Mills Act, like, we haven't done maybe a good job as a city of really enforcing it and making sure that people who enter into that agreement with us are maintaining their end of the bargain and keeping the houses to the standards that we want, at least that's what I recall, correct me if I'm wrong. So I would just, as a commissioner, love to learn a little bit more from you all.
It's such an important part of our city. Growing up here as well, my parents would drive us through to see the Christmas decorations back in the day, and there were certain houses in there that were really known to have the most spectacular Christmas decorations. And the neighborhood is actually still known for that, too. So even Halloween is like the most incredible thing you could ever imagine in our neighborhood. People, it's...
Really?
It is to see that. It's the... It blew my mind the first year that I experienced it because people actually drive in to see the Victorians on my porch, because they're on Juniper and Seventh, because they go all out. So you have lines and lines of people waiting to go up the steps and experience like the show of the case if they were gone. So, and even for Christmas, it's really, really still a destination for that, and there's a lot of people who run through. So it would be interesting if there was more city promotion for that as well, because I feel like that could be have your dinner in downtown on Grand and, you know, drive up and see the, you know, whatever holiday is being celebrated.
Some kind of maybe vote over the best line and do some kind of award or something.
Yeah, and we do that internally in our neighborhood. The board comes out awards for that, so it's known within our confines, but it would be great to get other city involvement happening. And then I do want to ask one question. There was part of what makes our neighborhood so great is the walkability from our neighborhood down to Grand and just around our neighborhood. And this might be a question for a city engineer or city planner. We did have at some point pedestrian lights planned for the community. There really isn't that many in there, so it's quite dark, come, you know, sundown, a lot of people are still walking, kids, so it is pitch black. And I know that got put on the back burner because of budget, but I just was wondering if there was nothing for that, because that, to me, makes the community more friendly for visitors from downtown to walk up after the burn and experience it.
Excuse me, yeah, we're scheduled to bring the Juniper Street lighting project to city council, I believe, September eleventh for approval. We did find, it came in, the bids came in way, way, way higher than we anticipated, so we spent about a month scrambling and stealing money from other budgets, and so we're gonna bring it to the city council.
If I could, how far up Juniper is that improvement source supposed to go roughly? I know you're getting put on the spot here, but if you're not a hundred percent, that's okay.
Exactly familiar with the project, how far up? I wanna, I believe, to Fifth or, yeah, I better not guess.
And that's okay. Commissioner Macaro, you have... I didn't know if it may be...
It's going to be Seventh.
Seventh is the darkest street. It's my street, so please.
Oh, it's Seventh, because that's kind of like the street I'm sitting in.
Yeah. And there, we want a stop sign on that corner. My dog wants a stop sign on that corner. We need more stop signs.
Seventh and Juniper, that is a blind hill.
So, along the lines of the promotional side, what are the resources the city has available at its disposal for promotions? Aside from the website?
You know, I'm not sure, Commissioner Macarroll, we know, or Commissioner Correll, we know. You know, we have Economic Development Director, General Shawn. I don't know if that's one, if this is one of the things on her radar. I know she does a whole lot of promotion for the city of Escanito, but that may be a question if somebody from the commission wishes to reach out to her, just to see if there's any promotion of that, and maybe after this discussion, hearing from the other commissioners, reach out to her and have a quick call with her and see what's being done, and at least provide your opinion on what may, could be done to help promote, you know, that section of the city.
And the HPC council's always put on us to do something, and so there's always so much sense for us at all, our community, all cares to do. So it's kind of like, so it's great that you're having a conversation with like, what resources the city have, because there's always so much here, and you're already doing more.
Can you talk about the volunteer effort that is around us right now? I have no sense of the size of it, or how often you meet, or what you do.
Well, that'd be for you, because I'm not involved in that at all. I'm involved in the Adobe side, but not on the Old Escanito district side.
So Old Escanito has a board, and there's president, vice president, you know, all the typical makeup, makeup, treasury, it's all voluntary. There's five board members. I used to be on the board. I stepped away when planning commission happened, because it was just a lot. But they, I'm still very active with them, because they're my neighbors and friends. So essentially, what they try to do as well is look for city grants that might be available for that one program that I was mentioning last time, the walking program with the markers in the streets, so someone can scan their app and, you know, historic houses pop up while they're on their guided tour of the neighborhood. So they do look for neighborhood grants as such, but lately, over the past year, so there just hasn't been that much development between looking for grants and actually securing one with the city. But the board actually does hold public meetings, one a quarter in the Mitchell Room, which we were at our last meeting, they hold them there. And even Alex and other city planners will show up and speak about certain things like EUs, you know, just whatever newness has happened. So there is interaction, but we haven't had much action.
The notification goes out for these board meetings, does it go to everybody in the districts? How does that work?
They typically communicate through their IG, Facebook, and then street signs for the quarterly meetings, and then every month they have a board meeting, but that's the private board that is. And, you know, so in those, in those meetings, that's when like the Mother's Day home tour is planned. They do neighborhood groups, like the block party, who just have, and always trying to look for more fundraising options. Again, it's a voluntary board, so, you know, the action is, you know, just everyone has like a family.
Does the city of Escanito ever repost that stuff?
I don't believe they do. I mean, and we've always thought that especially for the public, the quarterly meetings, it doesn't have to be just the neighborhood, it could be anyone that's interested in meeting the people that live in the neighborhood, or, you know, wanting to find out about that stuff. I've always been a big, like, supporter of getting the entire city involved, because I grew up loving the neighborhood, even though I didn't really interact with it until, you know, thirty years later when I moved back here. Kind of like you, it's the same thing, like, oh my gosh, this is in our backyard, it's incredible.
Oh, are there other neighborhoods in the San Diego County area that you all look to as a model and say, we want to be like that?
I mean, Kensington would be nice.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
Probably the only place I'd live, maybe instead of Escanito. It's a really nice, kind of cool neighborhood.
Where is it?
I'll buy a house there if I have to.
It's, yeah.
One-six, no, not one-six-three, eight-oh-five Adams Circle back eastbound, you make a left on Marrow Road.
It's the most glorious, I mean, the most incredible architectural, you know, species of homes, Spanish, and these are the big ones, and they're just stunningly beautiful. But I would say that, like, you know, from a resident in Old Escanito point of view, one of the things that we desperately need is code enforcement in our neighborhood. We are seeing an influx of overcrowding that's been allowed to happen, where, you know, a landlord is allowing five families to live in one single-family home, which is just destroying, like, not only the property, the actual house itself, you can just see the deterioration. That would be nice if we had better code enforcement with that, you know, not only for the certificate of appropriateness applications and really starting to hone in on the people that are, you know, just coming in, buying a home, quickly living in, doing whatever they want without any understanding or attentions when you pay top of your burden. Essentially, that is what everyone wants, is just a stronger code enforcement presence.
Because from a code enforcement perspective, my understanding is really to operate on a complaint basis?
It doesn't. There's multiple complaints made, all, you know, through the reported app or whatnot, but literally nothing happens. There's, you know, the lack of funding for code enforcement or whatnot, or lack of staff. Usually notifications just go...
Who within the city, is that, is that you guys?
Specifically speaking to code compliance?
Yeah.
That's within the Development Services Department, which Planning and Engineering sit within, but it is a separate division, but we can bring this discussion back to our acting director, Chris McKinney.
Is that something, maybe this is now a question for our city attorney, but procedurally, if we wanted to bring Chris in and have a conversation about it, is that something we're able to do?
Related to code compliance?
You mean specifically bring him here before the planning commission? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, because it seems like this speaks directly to our role here to enforce a certain kind of aesthetic standard, if nothing else, within the city, and be the city council sort of eyes and ears, paying close attention to land use. And so, if we have this concern, and it seems to be a very strong concern within, you know, for the residents, I would love to have a conversation with the person responsible and just like, learn, you know, what can we do here?
I would think, I mean, the first, you can always reach out to Chris McKinney and talk to him about this and see, you know, what he was just on board, and I'm not sure the commission really would be able to bring him in before the commission, I'm not sure exactly what that would be. So I would suggest first, well, just talking with him and seeing if he has suggestions for how that commission could go.
Yeah, and I don't mean it to sound accusatory, this would be like a discovery conversation, right? Like, what resources are available and how, you know, how do we, as a commission, sort of think about that when we're maybe considering other projects in the future and that sort of thing?
I think reaching out to him first.
Directly, and we're able to do that without, like, causing a Brown Act violation or something?
Right, just don't bring, you know, limit it to two of you at a time, talking with him, and not one or none.
So Veronica hooked me up with Doug Moody like a week or two ago, and I had questions as a contractor, there's this procedural issue going on with permits and stuff, and he walked me through everything, and it really helped me. So like, I'd be calling him, I'm sure he would be willing to talk to me.
And just to interject, I will bring this conversation topic back to Chris McKinney and let him know that there was an interest and that for him to be aware, he may receive contact from the commission or a commissioner, so he will be noticed. There's also one thing I want to mention if I can. Thinking back to other boards before, when I was active on them, there were actually, they had come up with certain areas, like even particular corners to do parklets on, and like these, these board members drew up like renderings of, you know, great little corners that would be perfect that are just right now are weeds and nothing, to have that done. I mean, we would love to have some parklets mixed throughout the neighborhood, just to improve and promote walkability, et cetera. And I feel like I'll probably think of five or six to tell you that I remember later this evening, but there are, I mean, there was thought put into it, there was thought put into more signage to identify key entrances into the Old Escanito district, you know, everything else, but there was some really good ideas in the past that we would...
You know, this is being kind of brought up to the commission, and I guess if there's gonna be a discussion about whether or not it's appropriate for us to be making some sort of recommendation to city council, it kind of seems to me that that discussion probably shouldn't be coming from the planning commission based on our roles and what it is that we do, but it would seem appropriate enough for any one of us as a citizen of Escanito to approach city council, maybe during the open, you know, the oral communication side, and just give your opinion. And certainly have that, have a discussion with Chris McKinney on the code reform type of issues. I think that's appropriate, and it wouldn't really be necessary for him to come before this board as a, you know, as an agendaized item. So that's kind of my thought on this, not discounting the questions you have in the discussion that we're doing, it's just the appropriateness of what we do versus trying to promote various things and the good things that are part of the city of Escanito. And the historic district is really important. I mean, I've driven around there, too, and it's really funny, because I've lived here all my life, and there are streets over there I have never been to. You're just shocked when you go and drive through, they go, wow, these, how do these homes look? But anyway, I digress.
Would it be your, in the, the impression in the Old Escanito neighborhood is of maybe not being as important to the city based on their choice of disbanding the HPC? Do the people in the neighborhood that as a negative?
Well, it certainly was. I mean, I think everyone understands the process that went into that disbandment, but nobody was particularly happy about it, you know, there was...
That's the impression I got from people I talked to.
Yeah, everyone was a little bit, and we could probably ask Denise, too, you know, moving into our neighborhood, what your impressions were.
The reason I'm saying that is because the optics of that, and then maybe the city pushing into promoting the area a little more, or promoting Halloween, or promoting traffic for Christmas, or starting to back that area a little more visually through social media or whatever, might be better optics than we just killed your HPC, you know? And we're not discounting your code enforcement lights, you know, so, just a thought.
If we may interject, Owen was able to locate specifics on the Juniper Lighting Street project, if you would like that update.
So we're gonna present to council as a base bid, which will be lighting along Juniper Street from Fifth to Ninth, and then the alternate will be the section from Second to Fifth, and we're hoping they would take both.
Well, you bring up something very interesting here, because having that hearing, you know, next month, it's a good opportunity to have any one of us go and speak in favor of this and use that, you know, two, three minutes of time to at least express the opinion of lighting there is very important and the reasons for that. You know, at least it puts it in front of the city council.
Just not too many of us.
You can't speak at public meetings, that is not gonna be a byproduct.
Yeah, currently, it's on the consent calendar, but any one of you could reach out to a council member and ask them to pull it and then speak at that point. I guess if it remains on the consent calendar, can it just, I guess you can't speak on an item that's...
Well, there's always the general comment period that you could speak, so you could always take advantage of that.
take advantage of that.
I did also have one more follow-up piece of information relevant to Commissioner Macaro's point on the pocket parks. The Old Escondido neighborhood does participate, or a portion of that neighborhood sits within a qualified census tract for community development block grant funding, so the city's Housing and Neighborhood Services Division, specifically the Neighborhood Services component of that division, has neighborhood meetings and neighborhood groups, and the Old Escondido neighborhood is represented in that neighborhood group cohort that Neighborhood Services works with and facilitates events or activities with. There have been instances of past neighborhood groups utilizing funds, and I'm not gonna speak to the allocation of those funds, because it's not my division, this is just anecdotal, for creation of pocket parks. So I would say reaching out to our Housing and Neighborhood Services Division to find out who the representatives are from that census tract that contains Old Escondido could be helpful, and I'm happy to put you in touch with those folks.
Well, I could, I could just keep pecking away at this, because I have a lot of curiosity around it, but I think I got the kind of high level of what I was looking for tonight, and it was very helpful, so thank you both for that.
Yes, and actually, thank you everyone, because, you know, I learned a few things with this discussion as well, so I do appreciate this being brought for our discussion. Any more comments on this paper? All right, now that I've removed all my papers, though. Let's see, the next item is future agenda items, this would be any, the time that if any planning commissioner wants to do, bring something on the next, bring up something for discussion on the next agenda? Saying none? No more oral communications?
No further.
Planning commissioners report? And then city planners report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So it is trending that the September tenth planning commission meeting is looking to be canceled, we don't have anything on the agenda, and the noticing period is close to lapsing. However, we are anticipating the September twenty-second meeting commencing with a tenanted parcel map and three CUPs, conditional use permits for a four lot subdivision and three drive, new construction drive-through restaurants and design review, so that will be a somewhat meteor item. We also anticipate on that meeting date having another historic preservation agreement before you all for current business. October eighth, we anticipate having a meeting, we anticipate the potential for a specific plan amendment with drive-through in, on that date, so again, a larger item, and then we do anticipate the first meeting in November also occurring, so if you anticipate absences at any of those, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Saying none, we'll close the meeting.